Are you ready? Seven P M and we are starting our Police Department Board Meeting. So the first is election of officers to serve from July first, twenty twenty five to June third, twenty twenty six. Officers to be elected as our chair, one of our vice chair, secretary, treasurer, and any other officers determined to be needed to conduct the board's business. So first is chair.
I nominate. Nominate Amanda for chair.
And Deosa second?
We don't need a now, we need a second.
Oh.
Thank God.
We both?
No, and ask if there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations?
Right. Let me see. I nominate this person right here.
I respectfully decline.
Okay, okay.
And so here we go.
Wrong.
Any uh?
Any other nominations?
I nominate myself.
Should we do voting or?
Ask for anymore?
Any more nominations?
Is there a motion to close the nominations?
Is there a motion to close the nomination?
A motion to close the nominations at this time.
And we vote?
Just say, is there any objections to closing the nominations?
Is there any objections to closing the nominations?
There's none.
Hearing none?
So we're gonna vote?
Should we vote for? Myself?
I just nominated myself so that nobody just walks into office freehand. You always get a competition, you always got a challenge. Not that I'm not a position.
I have positions.
Nobody just walks in freehand.
That's never.
Get a challenge.
Okay, so when you vote. So when you vote, you say the last name, who, P or Ibanez? Okay, when you vote, I call you. Collins not here yet? And you would need seven votes to actually be the winner, yeah? Collins is not here. Deosa?
Ibanez.
Ken not here, yeah? Donald?
What's your question?
Who's you're voting for? Either uh Hovpi or Amanda?
Amanda.
Pat? Myself. Randy is not here, yeah?
Online.
Online?
Hello. I vote for Ibanez.
Andy, okay, you're here.
Ibanez.
Eric?
Uh, Ibanez.
Mr. Moore?
Ibanez.
Cards?
Ibanez.
Lloyd?
Ibanez.
Benji?
Hovpi.
Lynn?
Ibanez.
Amanda? Myself? Nine, Ibanez. Okay, we have the chair, Ibanez.
Who was vice chair? Who wants to nominate for vice chair?
Nominate um, F Kat.
Oh. F Kat, vice chair. Any second? Or don't need second.
Any other nominations?
Attila Lynn.
Attila Lynn, vice chair.
Who?
No, she's, she's.
Cards.
Who did you?
I nominate Cards.
I first elected.
Uh, okay.
I respectfully decline. I do wanna nominate Ken Kong.
But he's not here.
Oh, he's not here. Oh my god, such a traitor. Deosa, I nominate Deosa.
I respectfully decline.
I nominate Oi.
Okay, okay.
Okay, nominated F Kat.
Yeah.
Deosa, Lynn. And who you nominated?
Just put Pat already.
No.
We all declining Cards.
Wait, wait.
Lloyd.
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 I nominate Cards.
Cards.
I respectfully decline.
Is there any other nomination?
Any other nominations for vice chair?
We make a motion, ask for a motion for.
My motion for it to close.
I want second.
You second again?
Ask if there any um objections?
Any objections to closing the nominations?
Can I? Is it possible to just motion to relax?
To relax the whole day?
Yeah, yeah, just like, because it's only one nomination, so we just like move it forward.
Yeah, but no, um, in, in, in the election, it has to be roll call.
Roll call, okay.
Our new vice is.
We have to go through all of them.
So if you're voting. It's either um, Hovpi. If you, you can either also abstain from voting, okay? Deosa? There's only, there's only.
Yes, no, sorry. I abstain until Ken gets here. Is there any, can't like wait till?
You should have done that for the close the nomination.
It's okay.
I'm so sorry.
Ken not here. Donald?
Yes, sir.
Who do you, um, are you voting for um, Pat for vice chair?
Pat.
Do we do roll call?
There's nobody else, right?
Nobody.
Okay, yes.
Pat? You voting for yourself? No.
Yeah, take it.
Yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll receive it.
She accepts.
Randy?
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 Uh, yes, Pat.
Eric?
Yeah, Pat.
Willis?
Pat.
Cards?
Hovpi.
Lloyd?
Hovpi.
Benji?
Hovpi.
Lynn?
Hovpi.
Amanda? Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
You know we should have, we supposed to introduce everyone.
Okay, so Pat is your vice chair.
I nominate for secretary.
I nominate.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cards.
Cards, who can nominate for secretary?
Uh, sure, awesome.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none?
Oh.
I nominate, um, I close, I, I motion that we close the nomination.
I object. I object, can we find more people? And does anyone wanna be nominated?
Yeah, it's good. No. Keep quiet.
Okay.
I will close, nominate Cards.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second. So we're gonna vote?
No, is there any objections to closing?
Any objections to closing nominations for secretary?
I object because I, I like to see maybe more people getting voted. There might be someone, right?
Nominate Eric.
It's good to have a challenge.
Um, let, if you object, you have to do a roll call.
Amen.
I like roll call.
You go.
Roll call.
Tell them in this area. Deosa, to closing the nomination.
Can I nominate someone else?
Later, when I. Ken not here. Donald? Do you object to closing the nomination?
No.
You're voting no?
I'm voting no, not to object. You object, no, I don't object.
Okay, so let me go. Pat?
Um, I vote Cardenas.
Yes, you're no.
What, what was your question?
To close the nomination.
Oh, to close.
Do you agree to close the nomination?
I still wanna vote in.
Open, yeah, I'm just, no.
I still wanna it open, because there's other people.
Randy?
I do not, I, I do not object to closing the nominations.
Uh, Eric?
Yeah, I vote Eric.
Willis?
No objection.
Cardenas, Cards?
Uh, Ellen, no.
Lloyd?
No.
Benji?
No.
Lynn?
I don't object to closing.
Amanda?
No.
And then I guess open.
So who you wanna nominate? I wanna Eric.
Okay.
Amen. Eric, do you accept the? As secretary?
I guess so.
Eric? Eric, which one is he?
Any more, any nomination?
Any other nomination?
M I T A, M U R A.
Any other nominations?
No.
Hearing none, okay.
Motion to close nominations?
Motion?
Second. Fair.
Okay, so.
Hi, Carl.
Okay, so for secretary, you have Cards? Or Eric? Yep, um, Deosa?
Eric.
Ken not here. Donald? For secretary, you have Cards and Eric um at the end.
I'm the new guy.
For position.
Secretary.
Secretary. Secretary.
This guy.
Cards. Pat?
Cardenas.
Randy?
Cards.
Eric?
Myself.
Next.
Willis?
Cardenas.
Cards?
Uh, me?
Well.
Lloyd?
Kuntorg.
Benji, Benji.
Cards.
Lynn?
Cards.
Amanda?
Cards.
Lynn, Cards, yeah, Cards.
Thank you.
And now for treasurer, any nominations for treasurer? One of our for treasurer?
Do you start? Yeah. With the, yes, cuz we were up at the other location.
Oh.
Yeah, that wasn't the going on.
Dang, oh my god, okay, well. I nominate Ken?
Ken. Ken's nominated, so there's Lynn and there's Ken for nominations for treasurer. Lynn nominated herself and second.
Lynn, Ken.
So what did we miss?
Um.
Cards?
Election.
Who you nominated?
Can you nominate Ken?
Amanda.
Or treasurer for treasurer?
Chair.
And Lynn nominated Lynn, Lynn nominated.
And Ken.
Anyone else wanna nominate?
Any other nominations?
I also, I, I, I nominate Eric.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Eric.
Lynn.
Wasn't the email Ken?
Can I nominate Evelyn back for you?
I might have just got back.
Okay, so any more nominations?
Any other nominations?
Any other nomination?
This is what we win.
Everyone, you have something?
Here we go back to the beginning since we were at the other location. To the very beginning.
We're already closed.
Ken not.
I'm so sorry.
Can I, can we?
It's already closed, so there's three nomination.
Wait.
You're going, is there a nomination?
Is there, are there any other nominations for treasurer?
Secretary or treasurer?
Treasurer.
Treasurer. Already finished on treasurer.
Oh, yes.
Motion to.
Motion to close?
Second. Second.
I'll put you on this um. Yes.
I'm so sorry, Evelyn.
Any objections to closing for treasurer?
Okay.
I have, I have the second.
I was up there at six o'clock waiting.
Any objection?
Any objections to closing?
No, okay. Okay, so we got, for treasurer, we got. We got Lynn? Cards?
Cards already said.
Wait.
And.
Eric?
Oh, sorry. Ken.
Eric.
Sorry. And Eric. Evelyn? So we got for treasurer, we got Lynn? Ken and Eric. So cut, um, Evelyn?
Yes.
Which one?
Oh.
You got Lynn?
Ken.
Ken or Eric?
Ken, you up to it?
Um, I, I'm thinking about respectfully declining the um.
Okay, respectfully decline, what?
Eric, Lynn and Eric.
This is, can I pass?
Yes. Okay, abstain, okay. Deosa?
Attila Lynn.
Ken?
Lynn.
Donald?
Lynn.
Pat?
Eric.
Randy?
Eric.
Eric?
Myself.
Willis?
Lynn.
Cards?
Cards.
Lloyd?
Cards.
Benji?
Eric?
Lynn?
Lynn.
Amanda?
Lynn.
Ken, Lynn.
How much?
Wait, vote to Eric or? Try that again, can you, can you recomment that again? And one abstain. Okay, so. Eight Lynn, four Eric and one abstain.
And how much is needed to win?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
So then one.
Okay, now moving on to city monthly reports, Home and Fire Department. Can we sit, can we sit near the fire?
Um, Donald.
Donald, can we first get hold? Be careful who's behind you though.
I, you know, um, I have a question here, person.
Can we, can we first take care of the city because they need to get back and then we can.
Oh.
Follow up. So let's have the fire department go first, then we'll go back to the.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
State your name, please.
I'm Hunter Young.
Thank you.
From uh, Clee Station Six.
Perfect.
So, there was no information specifically requested last meeting. So, statistics for June. Uh, A fires. Structured fires, there was five. Rush fires or wildland fires, two. Nuisance fires, which were like rubbish fires. There was seven. Cooking fires, one. Activated fire alarm with no fire, sixteen. Uh, emergencies, medicals, we had two hundred and three. Motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, one. Motor vehicle crash, dash collision, twelve. Mountain rescues, zero. Ocean rescues, zero. Hazardous material incident, none. And then our fire safety tips and announcements for the month of July. So we are focusing on wildland fire awareness, prevention and preparedness. Wildland fires significantly threaten flooding landscapes, wildlife and communities. With dry conditions and daily activities increasing the risk, it's crucial to take proactive steps to prevent and mitigate wildland fires. So some of the tips we have are. Lighten the load. Reduce, reduce the risk of ignition by maintaining your yard and cleaning your gutters to remove any fuels. Clear, cool and contain. Clear vegetation ten feet around campfires and barbecues. Keep a shovel and water nearby and ensure fires are completely extinguished before leaving. Watch the spark. Ensure machinery like chainsaws or weed trimmers and recreational vehicles with operating spark arresters are maintained regularly. And then, if you want any more information, you can visit our HFD website. Fire dot Honolulu dot gov. The Department of Emergency Management, which is Honolulu dot gov dash DEM. Or the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization. H W M O dot org dash lookout. And then if you have any questions, um, for next month's meeting, you can email. H F D N H P at Honolulu dot com.
Any questions for the board? Lynn?
I have a question. So we went to a meeting and we were told that within minutes. We don't have to worry about wildfires because within minutes, they can call for help. For wildfires. My question is, they didn't call the National Guard until. Not within minutes. Why wasn't it called until after?
What, what, are you referring to?
For the fires in Nanakuli, I'm in my head.
Oh, in my lead.
Yeah, because we were given, um. The fact that they would be called, and Amanda know this too, that. That they, they would call within minutes, we don't have to worry, Oahu don't have to worry because within minutes. People, they had the army and National Guard, they would come to Oahu. And I was in my house and I said, okay, this is, I, I even texted her, okay, it's happening now. Amanda, it's happening.
Yeah.
It's gonna, they're gonna, this is what's happening.
Right, can't speak on the National Guard's.
Policies, whatever, but they had a place. But they were called. You know, we, we were home, we were waiting for this to, um. Waiting and somebody died. You know, so that's my question, I mean, I'm mad because for all the talk that we went to this meeting and. Nothing was done, they waited.
I think the meeting that Lynn is requesting is the meeting with um, the army response team.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the higher level.
You know, I don't have that information personally, but I can get contact with people that still have that information.
There we go.
There we go. Have that information for this meeting, for sure.
There we go. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from online? Any questions from the community? None, thank you so much. Can we move on to the Honolulu Police Department District One?
Hello, everybody hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, well, my name is Sergeant Brian Sekira, I'm working out at District One. Uh, I work the night shift. I know, um. I'd apologize, I'm not, um, used to doing your guys' neighborhood board meeting, I'm kind of filling in right now. Um, but I do have some of the statistics for. For this past month, June. I'll read them off to you guys. Uh, motor vehicle thefts, last month we had two. Previously, I'm sorry, previous, last month we had three, this month we had two. For burglary cases, previously we had one, this month we had one burglary. Uh, for theft type cases, previously we had five. This month, we had three. Um, assault cases. Last one, uh, previously we had zero. For June, we had one. For sex assault type cases, previously we had one, one case, this, uh, June had zero. For graffiti type cases, we had zero previously and zero reported in June and for drug type cases, again, previously zero. And zero for June. Um, total calls for service. Uh, previously we had three hundred forty calls and for June, we had three oh four, so we had, we saw, um. A downtick in calls and also in crime. A small downtick and, um. Or uh, safety, our safety tips for E T D, we think one would like, yeah, just ask the community just to be, um. Uh, we're harping on safe driving, distract, distracted driving, speeding, ask the public to be patient. Uh, we, we're seeing a lot of, uh, unfortunately, um, a lot of fatalities. Um, this year, the last we checked was, uh, forty-three fatalities compared to nineteen the same time last year, so. Um, just ask the public to, um, be patient or be more aware, try not to, uh. Uh, distracted driving and stuff like that. Um, and like everything else, all the statistics information can be found on Honolulu Police Department's public website and that website is at. W W dot Honolulu P D dot org. So if anybody wants to take a little bit more in-depth look at, um, statistics for the area, they can do it that, check on that website. Um, is there, that's all I have right now, is there any questions?
Any questions for the board? Online from the board?
I have a question, chair. Um, just over seeing, um, for our district, we have been having a lot of tickets on Mokouea Street. A lot of tickets and we live on the street and we don't have enough parking there. So I know police department have been coming in the morning and in the nighttime, tagging all of our cars. So.
District five.
District fifteen, uh, Mokouea.
District five, so that would be.
Cause this is five. So this is five.
Oh, forgive me, I'm looking at district, our district. And I wanted to bring it up with the.
Any questions for District One?
So this is District five.
From the board?
Yeah, um, just for recording purposes, can we clarify which is District One, like where it is?
Sure, um, officer, can you please verify the borders for District One?
Um, the, so I'm, I don't work in this area, but, um, I'm filling in, so. I believe, uh, the cutoff is from. I think it's River Street in Chinatown. Um. I'm not sure where, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I don't have.
Officer, it's from River Street to Alamo. Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was it? Oh, yeah, we're, okay.
So the area that overlaps our jurisdiction and our Kuliata would be River Street area downtown. That's why you're on our board?
Yes, yes, alright.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
You for the clarification, any questions from the community? None, hearing none. Thank you so much, officer, thank you for all that you do and thank you for filling in.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Uh, next, we're gonna move on to Home Police Department District Five. This would be for your question, but we're gonna let them speak first.
Yes, Sergeant Kevin Taffiar, District Five. Um, let me give you guys the stats and I'll address that Mokouea parking. Uh, the stats for the month of June. We had eight aggravated assaults compared to five in May. There were twelve auto thefts compared to the thirteen in May. Burglaries, there were seven compared to the six in May. Robberies, two compared to the three in May. There were no reports of sexual assaults. Simple assaults, there were nine compared to the twelve in May. Uh, thefts, thirty-two compared to the thirty-three in May. Uh, U M Bs or thefts from vehicles, there were ten compared to the six in May. Total calls for service, there were two thousand five hundred twenty-four compared to the two thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven. And as for parking. There could be several reasons why there's been an uptick in parking complaints there. But if they're coming out on both daytime and nighttime, there was probably a complaint generated regarding. The parking concerns over there, that's why this parking has been addressed and citations have been issued.
I have a question. Okay, I see police officers have been taking, cuz I got to.
I see police officers have been tagging, cause I got two. Sister here got one, my husband got two. Um there's not only a police officer that has been tagging, also sheriffs. So why is the sheriff tagging our side too? On Mokoia Street? I mean, we hardly got parking for our cars there. Yeah, I mean, if the business is closed and we park our car there, we get tagged. If we're at, we're not even on the bend. Four corners get tagged. Yeah, where, because my husband got tagged and our neighbors all got tagged too. Where they're not even at the end on the corner, but they all got tagged. And my husband says it was from either the sheriff department. So Hawaii is the sheriff's tagging in our area, ain't that city and county roads?
As far as the sheriffs, the sheriffs cover the entire state of Hawaii. Technically, so I mean, they they have jurisdiction over the whole state. Yeah, whereas the city and county of Honolulu, we only ca- covered this island of Oahu. So you would have to check with the the Department of Law Enforcement as to why they're being tagged out there.
Yes, and like I was sharing on our Mokoia Street, it hardly ever, we have parking. There's, we all gotta park, road parking. So how are we gonna work that out that we all been getting tags left and right? And we have to park on the road, so.
Uh so Pat, I don't need to uh sway from this conversation, but Dre later on will be on, representative for um the governor, so you can ask. The representative for the governor. That question, that, cause it involves, I guess, the sheriff, which is state.
Yeah.
Your city county, city state.
State sheriff, yeah, because it's it's not only the.
We will move on. Wait for that. I think that's your question, right? Um are there any other questions for the board?
Thank you.
Any other questions from the community? Here in the, thank you so much, Officer. Thank you for so much for all that you do. Please stay stable.
Alright, thank you for your time.
Alright, Board of Water Supply?
Hi Iris.
Hi.
Here again?
Yes, it's Iris. Okay. Thanks.
So I'm Iris Oda from the Board of Water Supply. I usually come in and I do uh, I reported last month's main breaks. I give the general announcement and I. Try to answer questions or take questions back or someone's help me answer it. So for the month of June, there was one main break on June second. A twelve-inch pipe near twelve hundred North Nimitz Highway. Okay, so that was the one main break in June. And the general announcement is, so July is Smart Irrigation Month. Uh it's beginning the peak demand for outdoor water use. As the summer heat kicks in and sprinklers go into overdrive. So be water smart this July. Check for leaky or misdirected sprinkler heads. Check uh water early in the mornings to reduce evaporation. Attach the shut-off nozzle on your garden holes to avoid waste. Install a weather-based irrigation irrigation controller. And that's eligible for a border water rebate. Uh and um capture rainwater in a rain barrel. So that rain barrel is also a for eligible for border water rebate. So smarter irrigation helps keep your landscape green and may lower your water bill. So get more tips at our Board of Watersupply dot com. As slash irrigation. So please go to that site. You can see a lot about outdoor air of rebate of. Water conservation, so indoor conservation, I think water conservation.
Does any questions? Any questions from the board?
Hi Evelyn Cullen, I got a question for you actually too. When will the main office be open again? Access to pay our bills? And when can um businesses be able to pay online as well as residential?
Okay, online, as for the opening of the office, I believe it's open, cause I want to, yes, it's open. You go in there now, there's a panel up there that you can go to the window and have the cashiers help you. As for the online for business, I I have to ask on that, but for residential, I pay mine's online.
Yeah, yeah, but businesses.
Yeah. Businesses, I'm not sure. I I haven't tried that. Cannot, I'll ask if.
It cannot, okay. It can.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for the board?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Uh Lloyd Pohano. Um how do we go about submitting? Uh if there's a business, but it's kind of borderline on the sidewalk and there's a pipes. Pipes that been leaking for a few months now. And I don't wanna go through the business, but if on a website or something.
Um you can let me know if you have the address right now. I can do that. And if you don't, there's the. Contact, okay, we probably have a water waste hotline number, but there is contact us, contact us. At H B W S dot com. And you should, oh we got bored.
Okay.
And you should be able to uh leave a message. On that, exactly. Oh yeah, I'll be here for a while. If you can give me the address.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll give them a call and things like that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Um any questions from the community? Thank you so much, Iris.
Thank you.
Moving along to Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transit, Hart?
I'm sorry, Border Watersupply dot com, sorry.
Border.
Yeah, contact us.
Anybody from Hart?
Oh, yes. Hi.
Yes, yes.
Uh hi Chair Vines.
Yes.
Board members and community members. Hey, uh I'm Gabby Camacho. With the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transit, uh Transportation. And joining me this evening is Kapulani Mochizuki. From our Dillingham Utilities Relocation Contractor Non-Inc. So a few updates for you guys, um. For the first update, for segment two, um which is from Pearl Harbor to Middle Street. The station construction is complete as of May uh twenty twenty-five. Core system installation is complete and testing has started. Trial running, a rigorous testing phase that will lead to operational readiness is ongoing. And last night, um the emergency preparedness drill was conducted. Which is a part of a trial running. And um this allows first responders to simulate emergency scenarios and test their coordinated responses for preparedness. Assess emergency coordination and support safe and secure tra- uh system. So the participating agencies um in this exercise included DTS, BLT. The Honolulu Fire Department, Police Department. Emergency Medical Services, the bus, TSA, Safety Consultants. And Heart and Hitachi Rail Honolulu Joint Venture. So for our second update, Dillingham uh C C R four project. Utility relocation is ongoing with crews working on installing. Um switchgear and transformer pads, electrical lines, uh sorry, yeah, electrical lines, jet grouting for electrical lines. Relocating water line and sewer line and punch list items for telecommunications. And also streetlight and traffic signal work. For our third update, C C R three downtown is wrapping up. And crews are working paving, striping, landscaping, street lighting and other punch list items. For the next update, our city center guideway and stations, C C G S Contractor. Tutor Perini Corporation. Is working in the easement area along Kawai Street as needed. For drilled shaft work, which is essentially drilling the foundation for the guideway columns. Next, I'd like to give a recap of the neighborhood design workshop for the Holau Chinatown Station. So the meeting was held last month and it went very well with about forty to fifty people from the public in attendance. So our design team, they gave a presentation on the features of the station and showed renderings of the station. And then the meeting broke up into, uh I believe, six different booths. Where subject matter experts manned the booths and they spoke to people from the public individually. And addressed any questions that they had. So the boot topics were on station design, artwork and landscaping. Transit-oriented development and existing buildings. Um general uh information. An input from the public was taken on things like uh color and design features for the station. How the station should relate to Chinatown District. What public art they'd like to see. What plazas they enjoy most around the island and why. So that similar features could possibly be incorporated into the Chinatown Station and Plaza. And uh more things like that. So we'll be hosting these neighborhood design workshops in the upcoming months. For the other city center stations, including Kuliata, C C C downtown. And civic center stations. So Kalihi and H C C workshops will likely be held within the next two months. So once the dates are set, I'll share the schedule with you all. And we're looking forward to seeing you all there in person. Uh lastly, I just wanted to give a reminder of our upcoming online business and community meeting. It's uh July thirty-first at one P M. So the meeting is going to focus on segment three guideway and station construction. So that's work from Kalihi to Kakao. And there's going to be a short presentation on this segment. Um explaining things like schedule, um. Columns and peers for guideway, construction, traffic plans. And more from uh our contractor Tutor Perini Corporation. The meeting is going to be announced in our e-blast and social media. So keep an eye on on Facebook, Instagram, X and our LinkedIn profiles. So this concludes my presentation. If you would like to get in touch with us at Hart. You can email us at info at Honolulu Transit dot org. Or call the project hotline at eight oh eight five six six two two nine nine. And I'll put this information in the chat. So um now we can open up the floor to any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Thank you Gabby. Any questions from the community? Or online?
Chair.
Hi, hi Senator, please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, um. Can you just give us an update of of the completion? When the anticipate completion of this rail system?
Yes, so thank you for the question. Uh construction is estimated to be completed in twenty thirty. And then um uh to be servicing the public, we're estimating twenty thirty-one.
And how far behind are we from the uh original anticipated um completion?
Uh I would have to look that up, but um I can actually. I can do some research and then I can take your email privately in the chat and I can email you an answer if you'd like.
Uh yeah, you can email my office, send him at capital dot away dot gov, but I think everybody would like to know, right? Cause we keep being told it's gonna be completed on this date, we're gonna be completed. And it seems like a lifetime that we've been under construction. And that our businesses have suffered and we're not even through Dillingham yet. I mean, it's been crazy for all of the residents as well as the businesses there. And then it's gonna impact Chinatown and all the way to Kakao and it's, you know. How many riders do we have now on on?
Yeah, so that would be a question for uh Skyline, uh DTS. Uh Hart is responsible for design and construction, but. I can connect you with their customer service uh when I do email you. And I can come back next month with the um with your initial question and present to everybody.
Okay, well, I think Hart, being as a heart, you should have that information from. The DTS or whoever. So we can be a one-stop, cause if you're gonna come in and present, then you should have. Some of these answers. So we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Senator Rans. Randall?
Hello, um yeah, mainly just wanted to ask about um. Construction updates specifically around like Ebelay coming into Chinatown, cause uh the senior home across the street, my building, two and five North King. We're both very on edge about the uh anticipated twenty-four seven construction schedule that's through here. Um it sounds like to get like more fidelity on the dates, we'll have to keep an eye out for that meeting you mentioned, getting announced in your social media and e-blast.
Okay, so your question is on schedule surrounding two one five uh North King Street?
Yeah, like Ebelay and King Street. Um do you know if it's true, is there plans twenty-four seven construction or?
In that area. I'm sorry, I I do not know off the top of my head. Um but we are in contact with your uh property manager. And I can take down your name, um and I can contact him uh and hopefully he can pass. Uh the message on to you or I can take your email or phone number privately in the chat.
Um sure, yeah. Um I also just wanted to say really quickly. Um in a response to Senator uh Mercado Kim's line of questioning. I think Hart has been through a number of years of mismanagement, but I've been really impressed by what I've seen from the museum. Laura Kikina, I feel like she's turned the project around, so I think it's a very valuable project for the city of Honolulu. I know the ridership numbers are disappointing right now, but I think as it gets further into the city, we'll see. Of more use by riders and it'll come to be a cherished asset in the city's infrastructure for years to come.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very. Evelyn, go ahead.
Hi, so I don't know if um you would know this data, but the amount of vehicles whose um tires get popped because of all the metal fates on the road. I being one. I don't know who to address. I know it's um go ahead and contact the city, but what's the turnaround time? Um that's also something I think you guys should be in the know of. Since you guys are part of that, right? Hart is responsible for all of that. And then also, I mentioned it before. Um as soon as the construction is done, please remove the cones from the road because it turns into. Right lane, left lane, and then when you get through the the gauntlet, there's no construction going on. So that can be really frustrating, especially in the afternoon hours and people are trying to get home from work. Thank you.
Thank you Evelyn. Um if you do have concerns about any of your property being damaged on due to our construction. Then you can email, I'm gonna put the um our info at uh email in the chat. And you can email all information, dates, pictures, all of that, and we do take care of it. We have a claims department. And as for the cones, um yes, this this issue has kind of been been brought up a lot, especially when we started construction, but. Basically, um the cones and the traffic uh control has to stay how it is implemented. Because it um gets drivers and pedestrians very used to how the traffic configuration is. If we're constantly tra- uh changing it up every day. Then there uh, you know, the the drivers and the pedestrians may get a little confused. It could cause safety issues. Um also. Um it takes a lot of time to set up block by block uh traffic control. Not only is there the cones that we have to set up, but there's um, you know, traffic signs, pedestrian signs and. It's a lot of time and money for the crews. It takes away from uh productivity. But I I do understand what you mean. It it's it's um. When you're on the road, not every area is being worked on at the same time, so it can. You know, I I appreciate you bringing up your your um.
Yes, and specifically talking about Nimitz Highway, there's no pedestrians.
Okay.
Okay, cards go to.
Thank you.
Hi, just quick comment, especially about Senator Kim's um question about. What was the original date planned? I did remember, it it's just comment, but I remember when my mom told me that. You know, you'll be able to ride the rail in high school in twenty twenty. Um and now it's twenty twenty-five, so and I'm in college now, so it's great, it's amazing. Um. But in terms of ridership, I know people are concerned about how many people ride the rail. I. I before I had my car, I took the rail constantly to Philcom. It is very busy in the morning and it's very busy in the afternoon. Midday, obviously, it's not really a lot. And I remember back in June, July to September of twenty four, twenty-three. That's when it was like really low, but now it's, there's a lot of people. So I don't think ridership is a problem. Um we just need people to get used to riding the rail and understanding how it works. And I hope that it can finish and hopefully go further. To other places, not just Alamoana, because it would alleviate traffic to U H, if we could get it to U H.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, cards.
Chair, can I follow up on a question?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead Senator.
Thanks. Uh Gabby, on the question that came out about claims. Um I think, and you mentioned photos and dates. I think it's difficult because even myself, I ended up having a slow leak in my tire. And didn't realize I had it till, you know, a week, two weeks later. And so you can't pinpoint exactly where you got it, when you got it and the date. So I'm not sure how the claims are being accepted. Because I'm sure that's the situation that uh people that live around the area and use the Dillingham and the Nimitz area. Uh often find themselves later on, problems, so. So I'm not sure what they require. Can you come back to the board and tell the board as to how they are granting these um claims?
Yes, I can come back next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll be in September. We are on recess next month. Ernest, go ahead then.
You're muted.
Ernest.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Alright, so I do have a quick question. And my question is, why do you guys continue to put on these meetings with the public when you're not wanting to listen to them? About building. Restrooms, about having escalators and keep on putting them off? So what's the sense of us coming to these meetings when you guys keep telling us no, 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 without giving us a firm reason? Why you won't build restrooms and why won't you build escalators instead making more elevators? We don't want more elevators, we want some escalators. You come into areas where people going to need escalators more so than anything else. You're gonna come into areas where you have a lot of the older people, like the senior um residency in Ebelay and all that. So just, that's a question to think about, okay? That's it. You don't need to answer, just question to think about.
Thank you Ernest.
Also, quick follow up, uh just comment, um we need more elevators. If you need to use the escalator, there are also stairs. Just comment, yeah.
Any other questions from the community? Hearing none. Thank you so much Gabby, but one more thing for me. We have to make sure, yes, we're all human beings. And we're gonna, people, we want people to ride the rail. We want it to smell fresh and clean from the first day that it is ridged. So people are humans and they're gonna need to use the restroom. And then ADA, we wanna be ADA compliant. People have disabilities, some of them are invisible to the eye, and we're not gonna go around and ask people if they need that sort of help. That should be readily available at any time for anyone. So please make sure that both of those are taken into account for whatever is built moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you Gabby.
Thank you Gabby. September, okay, September. Um board business? This should move rather quickly. Again, this is for location will be here. The time you should be set, third Wednesday every month, starting at seven. Any objections to staying a couple on holiday? Hearing none, I think that, so we're gonna keep it.
Okay.
Heard that, Ken.
Thank you. Okay.
I can comment.
Okay.
Like tonight, I was there six o'clock waiting for this to happen. And I did not receive, I checked my email, I did not receive any update of this location being moved. Also, a community member had shared her email with the same address. So I didn't get it, she didn't get it. So um anything that happened prior to us being here, I think I wanna revisit that. And if if that's just being fair. That's just being fair, and if anybody objects, then then that's not porno. Right?
I motion to approve that.
I object.
Okay, we're gonna move on though nonetheless, right? Cause we're gonna get to.
Enter the that.
Yeah. Okay, so we're, are we accepting that this location in the time being?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on. B, determination of board recess schedule, August twenty twenty five to June twenty twenty six. Most re- most recently, the board has recessed in August, December, and June. Any changes to that?
What? August, December, and ended June? I thought we went to recess.
So August.
No, we haven't, we have given.
You should have been on August, December, and June.
Thanks to you guys.
Can we, actually, just quick, June, can we change it to May? Because May is graduation season or?
Would it make sense to keep it in May? Because that's like update for what's going on in the summer.
So the ones who have kids.
Somebody wants to make a motion to change?
Um make a motion to change from June to May.
Anybody second? Hearing none? No.
Good effort.
So where's the state?
It's during the June.
Any objections to?
Yes.
I object to trading to May.
Oh, no, no.
Still go call for change if we need that.
No, we're gonna keep June.
Well, we're keep.
Oh, no, the June, okay.
Sorry, I always object to May.
Yeah, no.
Okay, the ones who have kids is easy.
Yeah.
Keeping it.
So Chairperson, um question, so this is for the meetings are you calling?
Yes.
So it's for the recess December.
Resesses.
Yes.
Yeah, August, December, so it's gonna be August twenty twenty five, December twenty twenty five, then June twenty twenty six.
You will recess.
We already had.
There's no meetings.
Yeah. We already had.
Yes.
So we're gonna move on. No objections? So we're gonna keep it?
Keep it.
Okay, good. Moving forward. Uh C, adoption of rules including for festival. Any objections?
Your. Was it one minute?
One minute?
One minute thirty seconds was it?
One minute thirty seconds.
Yes, one minute thirty seconds for questions, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And comments, right?
And comments.
One minute thirty seconds. Any objections to keep it up?
The other one, presentation.
Presentation is ten minutes. Ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
That includes the question.
Yeah.
That ten minutes.
So presentation is ten minutes for the presenter? They don't have to take up the whole time, but they do have the maximum of ten.
And one point five minutes for questions.
And one point five minutes for questions.
Quick question.
Any changes to that?
No.
Ask any question, any objection?
Any objections?
No objections.
Moving along to D, establishment of committees and committee chairs, co-chairs? Anybody wanna form it or we can table it for later?
Um I wanna chair my same committee that I've helped, cause I think that I've been effective in what I do.
Then your committee, this is for records, so uh safety committee. Safety committee for.
From below Nimitz until um Sand Island.
Evelyn is also, Evelyn was to safety for chair. She wants to continue. Anybody else?
Uh education.
Education, Diosa, chair?
And Cards.
Yes, I don't mind being co-chair again.
And any co-chair for Evelyn?
Yeah, you should.
Um I, my husband's been co-chairing all along. We've been.
Can you have a third chair?
I mean, you can have somebody else, but I, although we've had names. I've never worked with anyone. No one has ever approached me on anything, so it's always been my spouse, myself, and my ohana.
So the safety chair is um just to fill us up to what we're really well.
Pat would be good, cause she's in our commu- community as well as Maxi.
Everybody's in the community.
Is is safety calling like um neighborhood watch and stuff?
From Nimitz to Sand Island.
Yeah, if you wanna create a neighborhood watch, then that would be safety also.
Yeah.
If you want that, yeah.
Okay.
Neighborhood watch.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do that?
So Pat, Benji, would you like to?
Uh yeah, we'll discuss.
Well, professionally I'm a probation officer, so technically I'm always doing what that is.
What is that?
But specifically.
Sure, I'm always doing that too, as long as it's a side. So I think it's everybody's curiana, but if you wanna be on the street, it's working on anybody.
Okay. So we're just establishing the committees and then if you want to join, can join.
Right, so if anybody wants to join, it's it's up to you.
Yeah, anybody is welcome.
Yeah, everybody's welcome.
First time on the board, we need to know what committees are you guys talking about. How do you go with this?
You wanna do homeless friends? Ooh, I wanna be on that.
Okay.
And there's no maximum amount of people.
So Evelyn is safety, whoever wants to join, Evelyn, she's the chair. Um Diosa is education.
We do need, we do need um, the needs people to be on that.
Okay, so for Evelyn, who wants to be with Evelyn on her.
I'll go with Evelyn.
Okay, so Pat and Evelyn.
And Lloyd.
And Lloyd.
Lloyd.
And Benji.
Anybody in the community?
Anybody in here?
It's for the safety.
It's everybody, right?
Would anyone in the community would like to join safety committee?
Okay.
Well, I can.
After, can after.
There we go. Okay, so we have um, at any time, anybody can join.
Yes, any, any committee.
Yes, okay.
Community.
Question.
Welcome to the community.
Question. With that, Violet and Sun Chanla, how would we go about messaging each other about being or doing committee?
Well, like neighborhood watch, you can, that's community, it's anybody. You can, you don't have to answer to the NCO officers.
Yes.
It's open to the community. So that would be public safety of Evelyn, really good. Okay, for education, anybody wants to join Diosa?
Anyone would like to join education committee? Okay. I'll pull them anyway, it's okay, they're too shy for camera.
Yes.
Okay, with you, Diosa, of course.
Yes.
And then what is this?
And I wanna be on as a witness, homelessness, and then I wanna be with Benji.
Yeah.
Anyone would like to be with homelessness?
Just just asking, we can go on any amount of, any amount want.
If you're too shy, it's.
Knowledge is power.
Knowledge is power, so this engagement, positive engagement, I mean, we need and each other.
Yeah, you need. Yes.
Now we're talking.
I have a quick question about the neighborhood watch.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
Um is there perimeters to that? Like does each?
That you have to work with, I believe, HP. They help to formulate that.
The community.
Yeah, and what Evelyn, Evelyn's gonna be um heading that up, so you can work with her and Pat.
I wanna do a neighborhood watch for my area. You know, I might, I might ask Ernest for Chinatown, my area.
Come on, Ebelay, Chinatown.
Yeah, Ebelay, Chinatown.
Okay, um Ernest, you're online, so um I think we're gonna.
I'm gonna contact you for Chinatown.
Yeah, so I I can't hear you guys, so when public concerns come up, I wanted to say something about that anyway, so thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So you.
I wanna make it specifically known that it's still the same for Nimitz to Sand Island part.
Hi.
For safety committee.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to be safety committee from somewhere else, my primary focus is that area.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Oh, but safety.
Uh safety, so NCO, NCO, according to NCO, it's for the entire district.
But it's.
I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna just go to the.
I'll make some, some district for safety for my area.
But for the past two years, it had been.
Yeah.
So NCO didn't say anything to me for the past two years, and it's been no Nimitz to Sand Island.
It's, it's, it's NCO there.
It's been that way.
For safety is for the entire district.
For the entire district. So maybe just a quick idea, maybe it's, maybe you can focus on that area, and then your other members can also focus on other areas.
Yeah. They are my area, that's why they joined in.
Okay.
So anytime you have a meeting, you are responsible for, if if, any, if you establish, yes, if you establish a. Um a committee, you have a meeting.
Yeah.
You have to send me, um send us the agenda, and it has to be, you have to find a public place where everybody can join. And then send me the minutes on your own.
Okay.
Okay.
One quick one. Can we just make the information public for the community, for the the neighborhood? Neighborhood watch and walks and all that kinda stuff, so everybody can guys join.
That is a good facility with HP.
So we can't create anymore committees or can we create?
Do you want to?
I think.
I would like to create a committee, um outreach and coordination. Um that's where we can, because we now have a social media presence, so I would like to facilitate. I want to facilitate that uh social media presence, I wanna also create that use source.
I wanna be in your community.
Yes, maybe, yes, co-chairs. Anyone, yeah. Social media. Uh outreach and coordination.
Yes.
And then we, and we also have uh the Christmas parade with uh the business association, so we can.
With Enkali Valley.
Enkali Valley, so we can do our partnership with the.
We're expanding our world.
So sorry, now, a question.
Yes.
So will that be a, a way of um through cards and social media? Where we post our minutes and our meetings and and whatever?
Yes, we will, so I will.
Will that be accepted?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Uh your minutes will be pub- um will be um publicly published in our NCO website, right?
Okay, but it can also be through cards.
You can, you, she, he can do whatever he does on the, his, you guys, um your social media.
The board. So would that mean that he would partner up with um Tyler and Radiant then? Since he's doing the outreach and the whole social media platform?
I typically can, I typically.
We can, we can, we take it down. Surely.
But that's very inclusive for everybody.
Love that first.
We'll, we'll clean it up later, but anyone wanna join?
Just, we just have much to ask here.
Okay.
You're doing everything.
You're gonna have to table her?
I think, um you wanna get to the presentations of somebody. So um I think we're gonna accept whatever we have now, then we're gonna just move on.
Okay.
Okay, and then, any objections to moving on?
No.
Thank you. Okay, and then, so approval of regular minutes, any motion?
Motion to it second.
Second, thank you so much, okay, so we're accepted. Any corrections? Done, okay, getting to the presentations, is it community? Presentations, ten minutes, presentations of Kaemo Molson, anybody from Oha?
None.
Okay. Anybody online?
Oha.
Okay, moving along to to the top, community outreach, Jesse.
Did I have a presentation on my laptop? It's a way to detect that I have not texted any, so.
Uh.
If not, again, just subverbalize.
To verbalize everything that is. Thank you for your patience, Jesse. Appreciate you.
For having me.
Jesse, what's your last name for the?
Jesse Jones, founder of to the top of way.
Right here, V.
Jesse, the link is right on top of here.
In which um NCO website?
So that uh, if you have permission office, like, and you click on it, then your reservation.
I did, I do that.
If you would like to, um if you'd like to take to the site first, and then you can walk on that presentation, that should try to figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. Arja, go on. Yeah, can you help him? Thank you so much.
Yes.
Um and then so for Carl from H F V, thank you for your patience.
Hello. Hello, thank you for uh inviting me, Madam Chairperson, uh Madam Chairperson. Uh members of the board and the Kalifa Lama community members. My name is Carlos Tsuka, I'm in the fire department, and today we're gonna talk about cooking and fire safety.
I like that. You always get good subjects.
So just as a a general overview, cooking fire safety, uh cooking is actually number one in the nation and in the islands. For uh structure fires. And so we really, really have to, you know. Get ourselves to pretty much stay in the kitchen or at the grill while we're cooking. And this is, the next slide is a repeat of.
It's.
Sorry, sorry Carl.
Come on Cards.
I'm sorry.
Okay, uh this is a repeat of every single um presentation I do with you guys, but. The only way you can have fire is with the fire triangle. Oxygen, heat, and fuel. If you do not have one of the sides, you can't have a fire. So in any event that you wanna put out a fire, you gotta think about which leg of the fire triangle you're gonna take away. So water would be cooling it down and taking away heat. Oxygen, propane tank is a good example, turning off the propane source. You take away the fuel, I'm sorry, fuel. Oxygen, a pot of burning oil on the stove, cover it with a pan. Or a cookie sheet, or even a cutting board. You take away the oxygen, okay, and you put off fires. Alright, um as far as having power outages, you know, hurricane season, I wanted to bring up. Um because my last presentation was in April, but uh hurricane season is June first through November thirty first. And the reason why I bring this up in the cooking section is because many of us, if faced with uh electrical power outage. Because of high winds, you know, hurricane maybe, um tropical storm. We're gonna possibly use methane stoves, propane stoves. Alright, okay, so next. So let's go through cooking hazards real quick. Forward and forward again. So like that last slide, unattended cooking is pretty much number one. Where many of us might be cooking some. So like that last slide, unattended cooking is pretty much number one, where many of us might be cooking some chicken katsu. Or frying up some mupia and oh. The grandkids or kids need attention, so we're gonna walk away from the stove, we don't ever turn it off, yeah. Best thing to do is turn it off, but while you're cooking, we want you to have tight fitting clothes, not big bathrobes that can possibly catch the handles of pots. And have oil spill on yourself, uh always have the lid or a cutting board or a pan, cookie sheet larger than your pot or pan. On the side, even if you're not gonna use it, because if a fire started in that pot, that's the way we want you to put it up. Not with a fire extinguisher, because fire extinguishers, the product comes out at high pressure. And it could potentially push that fiery oil all over your back splash, now your whole house is on fire. So no fire extinguishers in pots of oil. Alright, and again, never leave cooking unattended, if you have to walk away, set a timer or put on an oven mitt. You're gonna feel really dumb, but it's gonna remind you, say you get a delivery from Amazon. Got that oven mitt on and you're gonna look at it and you're gonna say, I gotta get back to the kitchen. We don't want kids in the kitchen while we're cooking. Something like this could happen, and what happens to the kid?
Larry.
He's burned.
Larry.
Um always turn handles in, don't store anything on stove tops. Quick story about that, we did go to Marco Polo about eight months after um we visited some uh residents in their homes. And a few of them had mail and newspapers on their stove tops, right after they had the Marco Polo fire. You know, a lot of times, uh when I come here, it's just to remind you guys, you guys gotta kinda remember, fire can happen. And just throwing it out there, don't store anything on or near your stove tops. Uh and if the power goes out, don't forget to turn off the stove before you maybe go out to someplace else to get takeout, C D's or whatever. Uh we did have uh during equals power outages, we did have uh two different fires where the families forgot to turn the stove off. And caused the fire on their stove top. Uh and if you leave the kitchen, best thing to do is turn off the stove. And if a fire starts in your ovens, just close the oven, turn off the heat, let it burn itself out and let it cool down. Do not reintroduce oxygen into the oven, or you could potentially have a fire. Oops.
But I mean.
That's that's fire.
Little technical difficulties gang, so uh stay tuned.
Here we are.
Alright.
Back on.
Oh, back one.
We're in business.
Alright, um also don't cook if you're sleepy, been drinking alcohol excessively.
Yeah.
The key word is excessively. Uh and if you're taking medications that may cause drowsiness, cuz this, we have had people die in home fires. Because they were knocked out sleeping and couldn't wake up. Smooth, and we're gonna play, if any of you have never ever seen what happens if you put a small cup of water in a pot of burning oil. Watch this video. You should be able to play that. Really small cup of water. That's guaranteed second, third degree burn. This can also happen if you take the pot of burning oil to the sink and turn on the water. So don't do that either, and I'm gonna reiterate, all you have to do to put that fire out, take away the oxygen, cutting board, the lid. Or a cookie sheet, okay? You don't need anything else, do not put water and oil. Make sure your stove tops are clean of grease, oil, um the grease and oil on your stove tops, in your ovens, is like fuel for is fuel for the fire. This would include cleaning your hoods, your vents, um that have the fans and they got that filter on top. Clean those out too, or even replace those those filters, yeah, so that it doesn't heat up to a point where it catches fire. Okay, if your power goes out, you guys, me, think of using propane, butane stoves. Uh we want you guys to use these things safely. So um if you are using propane or butane, just know that the fuel in there is heavier than air, okay? These fuels, liquid petroleum gas is gonna sink, if you have any um spark or anything on the bottom, okay, we'll wrap it up. You could potentially start a fire, okay, let's go next. Make sure your stove top is rated for indoor outdoor, if you're gonna um use it for indoor, if not, use it only for outdoors. You always wanna look for the Underwriters Laboratory or this uh standards uh Ca- uh Canadian Standards Association label. Uh on all of your cook cook tops and the butane canisters. Many of you may not know, the butane canisters do have Underwriters Laboratory seals on it. And what makes, what separates the uh approved ones from the not approved ones is it has a venting system. It won't explode, it will shoot out fire, but the can itself won't explode and get shrapnel in you. If it heats up to to that point, so look for Underwriters Laboratory in all your butane uh canisters. Next. Okay, so indoor approved, well ventilated place, non combustible, you you can have to make sure it's a large enough area where you won't get carbon monoxide poisoning also. And always turn off, disconnect your fuel source after you're done, even your uh propane gas grills outside, disconnect them after you're done. A lot of people don't. And always plan to get yourself to safety if you do have a fire. This is a rerun of couple months ago. I think that's it. Or you can help us, again, you can call nine one one, you can text nine one one for any fire emergency, you need police, you need medical attention, nine one one. Um I did find, might be interesting to you guys, sorry I'm going over, texting nine one one, I recently had conversation with a hearing impaired person. And they would text nine one one in an emergency, so another way to use the text.
Nice.
Yes.
Okay, good, good to know.
Cool. Alright, and that's it for me.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, any questions from the board?
And if you guys learn one thing, then I did my job.
Yeah.
Yay.
Yay, we always do.
Okay.
So great.
Cool. Okay.
Uh any questions?
Thank you.
Terry, no? Thank you so much, Carl.
Cool.
Yeah.
Um and. Requesting a break from September, but I'd like to come back in November and we're gonna talk about Thanksgiving cooking safety.
Yay.
And and Christmas, Christmas or uh electrical safety.
Turkey.
Eric.
Christmas electrical lights.
Yeah.
Okay.
Since you guys are break.
Yes.
December, yeah.
And we'll see you again, thank you so much.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, mahalo.
Have you saved? Okay, and then Jessie, are you ready?
Yes.
Yeah, no worries, we'll come back, but just for the record again, you're first last.
My name is Jessie Jones, I'm two, I'm the founder of To The Top Hawaii. Thank you Amanda for having me.
Absolutely.
How do we, sorry to.
Uh To The Top Hawaii, it's a nonprofit that is geared toward any houselessness, we help aid them with essentials, resources. I had the pleasure of having coffee with Amanda, we gotta discuss something that maybe we could provide or add value to to the in the community. Give you just some backstory of who I am, um just another guy, uh I went um. I had some hardships in the past and I was digging myself into a ditch that I I knew that eventually I was gonna end up six feet under, back behind bars, or losing my entire family. So I had to make a decision to make a change and during this uh during this transition of helping houseless individuals, um I just wanna mention one story of Uncle Steve. Uh I talked to him at seven eleven and I was like, uncle, let me get you something to eat, whatever you want from seven eleven, just let me know, and no, I don't want anything, I want zippies. And I took that as attitude and I was like, I'm just trying to get you something to eat. He's like, can you be reasonable, he's like, you try to eat seven eleven every day, tell me how you like it. I say, okay. I ju- before that conversation, I sped off, I was like, well screw you then, if you don't want food, then I'm outta here. As I'm driving away, for some reason on my radio dashboard, the song comes on and the the name of the song was Judgment Day. I don't know if you know Kaple area well, but it's very difficult to U-turn, come back around and go get back in that parking lot, but I did. I had that conversation with him, went to Zippy's, I got him that meal, and ever since that day, I took off running. And I tried to help every individual and meet them where they're at.
Of course.
Fast forwarding to, is there any way that that can be presented, the uh?
Deception.
Yeah, on the screen. Anyway, I'll get right into it then, um. To The Top Hawaii. Ending houselessness is the goal for me, I know a lot of people tell me it can't be done, they just haven't been done yet, and I try to find a way. And everybody and any person that tells me it can't be done, can just get out of my way, and I don't, I'm not trying to say say that as arrogance or conceitiveness, there's a way. And I've been able to sit at tables I never thought I would be able to sit at, just by having that confidence and um pressing forward. The first picture I'm showing is just one of the first uncles we ever helped uh into Ulu Kekakui, which was a transitional home and housing, um. We've just taken off since then, really, um one by one, it doesn't matter who they were, they needed a haircut so they could get into a job interview. Kabika and Debbie, this picture I'm having in the middle, um I've been giving them dollars, knowing that they were just gonna spend it on alcohol. And I was like, I appreciate that you're telling me the truth. And um two years later. We have other documents in order, um they're next in line for housing, hopefully Section Eight helps, I was just waiting for that. I wasn't, I I knew eventually, or I was praying that they'd come around and know that this is not a type of lifestyle to live. So it'll be just more compassionate and correct me if I'm wrong on the facts, but um I think a lot of people think a lot of the houses population is from the mainland. From what I understand, it's ten percent, a lot of it is natives, it's our own people that's being uh. And from two thousand twenty four in the Maui fires, it went from six thousand houseless to I believe around eleven to twelve thousand houseless individuals, which is ridiculous. I think we're like one of the leading states for houselessness, which is.
Yeah.
Monkers, um this one guy on the right is not from here, he's Larry and I've been giving him food for a very long time. He's.
Can I follow that actually?
Yes, he is, I love that.
You're starting to bear that. Yes.
Yes. This guy Larry, I've been giving him food, I think food is a way to uh to the heart, people think, well, you're not gonna end houselessness and you're not, I mean, you're not gonna end hunger, like that's not the point, I'm trying to establish a connection with this person. For them to trust me enough to uh take it a step further. Uh Larry went missing out of nowhere, I use social media like a double edged sword, uh working with social media giants like me in Hawaii and Hungry Hungry Hawaiian.
Right.
He went missing because he got hit by a car and he was uh in critical condition over in um somewhere over H four, I think it's called, in this area. We managed to raise funds, we managed to contact his family, we managed to help him get all his uh credentials in order, fly him back home to um, remember Pennsylvania? Pennsylvania, he's back home with his family, so it's just taking, I know I haven't quite ended houselessness yet, but I've definitely changed the lives for certain people. And one by one, I think I'm getting a bit closer. Oh man, I agree with what other individual was talking about.
There are more. That's what I'm saying, let's get that.
On the left, that's the guy we're trying to get him lined up for a job, um he now lives in the mainland, has a girlfriend, maybe a wife and a kid. The two in the middle was the ones I was talking about, that was just um just addicted to alcohol and not doing. Now, two years later, after continuously just giving them dollars for forty ounces, they 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 reached out and said, I wanna do something with my life. And we've now got them all their credentials and they are well on their way into housing, and then that guy on the right was the guy who told you, he just came out of that car accident. Somebody hit him in the middle of the road and left him there, so. I managed to use social media to find him almost instantaneously through um H four, fast forward, escorted him through through the airport, got him home to his family in Pennsylvania.
Right on.
Thanks, yeah, I can go for him?
Yes.
Oh wow.
Yes.
Technology's crazy. Uh okay, our mi- our mission, obviously to bridge the gap between the houses community and available resources, I don't know if anybody in this room has ever tried to. Uh not have your birth certificate, social security card, uh ID and try to get that established. Uh try and tell that to a houseless person who doesn't have an address to send home those documents to, who can't get into a shelter because all the shelters are full. So we're trying to make that that connection and 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 bridge that gap, um I went online and tried to do it myself, I I don't know where the hell to look, honestly. Um our approach combining housing solutions that wrap around services, they address the root cause of houselessness. I don't I don't just help them get from point A to the point B, um I have, I know these houseless individuals by their first name and um sometimes their last. They have my phone number and it's not a business line, it's my direct line, when they call and they need something, I don't have food. Social media again, instantaneously I can get their first phone, we've done that on multiple occasions.
Right.
Values, compassion, sustainability, we run up in a time where we're told, don't don't look at them, don't uh don't talk to them, uh look the other way, what has that done for us? It's like now that now we're, they're everywhere, they're on every corner.
That's right.
In Chinatown, they're they're flooded in the bushes, they're, you get it. Um I had the pleasure of uh sitting with Andrea Tapola, who runs a R three program in Yine, it's uh revive, reconnect, restore, uh bringing um. Bringing the people back together, giving them hope, she wanted to extend that program over into Kaple. She let me and my wife Ashley, who is also the co-founder of To The Top Hawaii.
Oh hello.
And my brother Dee, which is the director.
Greatness.
Uh.
Welcome.
Run the uh R three program in um Dream House High School in Kaple, we have so many partnerships, whether it's with Mano Church, uh River of Life. Many other just kindhearted good people who show up, uh we we bring all the providers under one roof. You're trying to get these houses people to go to all these different areas to get um get their life together, some of them are handicapped, some of them don't have transportation, some of them, none of them left from right. And nobody's there to uh guide them, so I think that's the gap that we're trying to bridge right now. Breaking the cycle, um I've been using my story, our story, we go out, uh this is uh in K P T, uh where we uh helped with the one of the events there.
K P T.
Nice.
I was not running the event, but we definitely was there to make our presence known and just let them know that they have help and the support that I wish I knew or had when I was a kid. That's my wife right there dropping it on the stage.
Yes, yes.
And this is.
Yes.
Good for you, thank you so much.
Yes, of course. So along with that, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, this, like I said, I had a heavy pass, I was in F T C, I was in O triple C, I don't wanna get too far into that, I know I'm on a time limit today. But I'm trying to leave that behind me and it's not too much about, oh boo boo, me, I went through all this, I went through all that, it's what am I gonna do with that time that I'm deemed now? How can I make a difference now?
Yeah.
And that's what I've been trying to do.
Thank you.
Just two thousand twenty four, we managed to work with Ghost Hawaii, which is they try to empower the youth and um educate them on uh drug addiction, drug awareness, anger, violence. Uh we visited almost, in fact, we visited every school, did we speak at every school? No, but we have been speaking at the schools on our story. And that's been all fun and whatnot, yay, look at me, look at all the things or the trouble I've been into and now what I'm doing, but what am I doing or what are we doing to now? Um set them up to not have them walk through our shoes again, and so taking it a step further, we've uh went through, for example, U Challenge and we've showed them how to write a business plan. They didn't teach me that in high school, but to equip them, U Challenge, if you don't already know, it's some place where some kids are just like uh, they're on. they're on the deep end already or uh overlooked, um um just rebels. So they gave, if you don't wanna listen to authority, then learn how to open your own business. At the very least, it's the best, it's better than doing something you will regret later. Let's see, school community. I'm on the school community council for Honolulu, so I help um I guess advocate for aloha would be the a broad term on that. I'm also on the board, community board for Honolulu High School. I've flooded their school with um clothing and stuff for kids who don't, who are coming to school with the same clothes every day. So and now we're in the process of making them a resource center where I contacted TNC, uh uh Crazy Shirts Hawaii and all these other people that are just donating to this room. Where families don't have to come in there and just dig through bins. They're not going out to clothing racks like decent human beings and being able to shop for things that they couldn't normally afford. Um I've attached two seeds of peace, um Wainai Elementary, where we flooded them with uh toy drive, school supply drive, um
Nice.
Um anything that we could do to help the community. I I attached the seeds of peace that they didn't just take the donations that we gathered. They took it and they distributed it all along the west side. Um this is uh us speaking over at the uh Youth Challenge Academy and just on some of our stories, trying to just give them uh hope that we don't have to lift our shoes, just lift our stories and learn from it. So we're continuously trying to um do anything we can.
Awesome.
Let's see here, I'm done. Uh my first beach cleanup was alone. Nobody came when I when I called. Now I'm a part of all these beach cleanups from Andrea Tapola's one to um Ghost Hawaii to what's some stuff I we do out here? Um Mayor Rights, KPT, uh Pamford Housing, we come out there with uh my sister's keeper and we do uh haircuts for the kids. We stock them up on school supplies and we send them free. All volunteers, barbers, giving up their time and effort. Papa John's coming and supplying all the food and and making that connection. So I don't have to be there per se on the time. They can now contact Papa John's. They can now contact whoever it is uh to help coordinate these things. So we continuously do this, like every year. Uh Kahawahiki Village. We flooded them with uh this past uh Christmas with toys. Two hundred and fifty kids, over a hundred and fifty families. More toys than they knew how to do it. We're out of time, so sorry. Uh Ulu Ke Kukui, um the families over there were short on food. We came loaded as much as we could. I'm trying to fast forward to make sure I end up time. Uh we also throw night markets um over in Kapolei and many other areas we associate with. Kahawahiki, I mean, Kopea Homestead we've helped with. Um Okahi, Kailua Market, the Kanawi Night Market, Kailua Fall Festival. And this is our way to support, this is, if you ever go into an event, it's all local business. It's our way of supporting local. Um this is a way for families to put food on their table before they have to visit me at To the Tapu Aoi and try to fight for resources, food stamps and essentials. Go on, go on, I'm sorry, you know, I'm out of time. Uh the numbers, I mean, I was just real broad on the numbers. Uh we've helped over three hundred local businesses. Uh we've been involved in over a hundred and twenty-five community events. Um we've mentored over five hundred plus. When I say we, I don't mean just me. There is a huge team that we work with to mentor these youths and give them just a bit more uh life skills, uh how to deal with depression now. How to avoid um drugs, other other things that they could associate themselves with besides um just being in the cool crowd and stealing a moped or something stupid like that. We've assisted a hundred and twenty individuals, uh whether it was getting out of the tent into transitional homes or moving, moving. Uh this is one of the first families we've ever helped um into housing in Halevi Vista or in Wainai. And we still, we don't just, okay, okay, good luck. We stay in contact. I call up Auntie Lois, I call up uh Sister Natasha and I check on them and make sure they're okay and that they need to be helped with a job, is uh, does uh, does your son, the son is actually on the bottom of the picture, I'm just gonna fit it in there, so. Uh how you can help, I mean volunteer your time. Um I didn't know what to expect walking into this meeting. Um we are fully donation based. We are fully communi- uh community volunteered. All of our people that work at these events, they are all volunteers. We even hire houseless individuals to work in the event, so they don't gotta collect cash. They can be in the event, make make a decent amount of money and go afford a house. Thank you, I said, thank you. I hope you to add value to the table.
Thank you so much for all that you do for the people of Hawaii. It's inclusive, it's heartfelt, it's genuine, it's volunteer type. Please come back again.
Yes.
And if you can please invite um my sister's keeper.
Yes, yes, Teresa, she would love to be here.
I would love to have her.
I I got it.
Please, any questions?
Question, Evelyn? Specifically, um I'm gonna ask if you could work with some some group of houseless individuals right above um on San Island Access Road. There's a street right before Matson is, I mean, um Amron. It's like um Skid Row in LA. It really is. I've tried to help at least one individual there to get what you were saying, your ID, your social security card and all those types of things. But this person is also uh highly addicted to ICE. Um providing him with food, clothing, water, any any time that um I feel I have to go and help this individual, but because of his severe addiction, that trumps everything that's logical.
Yes. Yes.
Um so I can tell you now that there's not any type of social service or a nonprofit have, that have gone in the the community there.
I believe you.
So um if you could give it a try, 'cause I tried.
I give it a try, yeah. That's all we can do is try, right?
Yeah.
So all you can do is try.
And that's that's home, you know, that's that's
A lot, a lot of my stuff is, we are currently building the website right now. Uh somebody, a web designer, reached out and said she's gonna build the website for us for free just because she knows where our heart is at. So that while that's being built, everything that we associate with is either you contacting me directly from my phone number or my Instagram, which is To the Tapu Aoi. Uh yes.
I'm gonna burp that fact.
Can I get it?
Yes, please.
Thank you, sorry.
Um just quick, just a quick question, but uh can you give it?
Jesse Jones.
Just a quick, uh is your organization using self harm reduction?
Self harm reduction. Uh can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Like if they wanna continue taking drugs, you can show them a way to take drugs correctly or um like if they say no to like basically sobriety, like to teach them how to take drugs correctly or use lesser dangerous drugs. That would be
Uh that's that's something I definitely have to look into. I I have been run into a situation where I had to uh educate um a houseless individual to do so. When I go out there and I try and talk to them, you you can't force anybody to do something they don't wanna do. That's gonna uh exhaust me and annoy them. So in in the uh process of me going out and talking to people and meeting them where they're at, you'll you'll notice the ones that really want help kinda just pull away from the crowd and they start talking to us. The ones that want nothing to do with me are, they just go the opposite direction and they obviously need help too. But while I'm helping these ones, all of a sudden I got these three people help, they're gonna notice and then they end up coming around and say, what can I do, what program can I get to? And that's how we've been moving forward with that in particular. Thank you.
Please come back again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to residents and community concerns. Kurt?
Hi, um just wanted to make something quick. Um please join our Facebook group. It is Kalihipalama Neighborhood Board. That is our Facebook group. We also have Instagram at Kalihipalama fifteen. Um that is our Instagram at. And then you can join our newsletter at the Gmail, um Kalihipalama Neighborhood Board at Gmail dot com. Um and lastly, Bon Dance is gonna be happening. There's a Bon Dance on Friday at Kobo Chi Mission between five to ten PM. And they're also hosting it on Friday. And Friday is also Chico and Kung Wong Chee's Bon Dance between um six PM to ten PM. Um that is on Saturday, no, yeah, um Saturday, Saturday. Yes, alright.
That's it. Thank you. Evelyn?
Um well, we had a community member up at the other location where Ken and I was, um from Kamakapili Church. I don't know if she's here. Is she here this week? Okay, so she had given me some flyers, so on her behalf, I wanted to share this with the community. She was inviting of of kids to come and join their Papanha Music Camp. It's on Friday and Saturday, August first and second, as well as Sunday. Here's a flyer, um Friday, Saturday, eight thirty to two PM, and Sunday, nine to one PM, um on August third. It's gonna be at Kamakapili Church. It's called Papanha Music Camp. So if you guys are interested, contact the church. I got only four flyers.
Yeah, if it's your uh
A flyer?
Uh
Um
Do they have to pay for this? To the
Oh, she left some over there, I think.
I think it's free, yes.
It's free.
It's free.
And and then um going back to when I first walked in, so that's that situation. Uh my community concern would be to ask for a revote on things that I had missed, not due to any fault of my own. I had already sent in a complaint to the neighborhood commission regarding that. Um we'll see what they say, but I'm also putting it out on the neighborhood um community concerns. Um I didn't get the new agenda. Um and I just think it's right to allow everybody to have a voice.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like to add on to that because the agenda that I got was like in the mail from like yesterday or today to, with the new location, like this current location.
And I didn't get mine. I didn't get mine.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I have a quick question for Kurt. So through the social media, are we updating the community members on things that's happening on a monthly basis or just as a
Yes.
Um so for that, we provide, if you know, um if you want to post anything regarding like events, like I know Saint Elizabeth's has been posting up a few things already in our group, then you can post that. So events that are happening in Kalihipalama area. Um as said, if you wanna join our newsletter, Kalihipalama Neighborhood Board at Gmail dot com. You can also email that same email if you want any announcements via the newsletter.
Okay.
Um and uh it's about monthly events, yeah, so also, hey, um we have monthly meetings, so. And to my awareness, I did post it with the new location with, back here, so. I'm sorry to everyone that was misinformed about Salvation Army.
Oh, you have the website, oh, you have the location here?
I put the location here, yeah. The location is listed here. Um but I apologize for any misinformation that it was at Salvation Army. If they were confused about like, is it Kapalama Hale or is it uh is it uh Salvation Army?
But on your website?
On my social medias, um yeah, it's Kapalama Hale.
But I'm not on the website. And the last meeting that I did attend, our uh chair did say the location. And that's what I went on of, so.
Right, but I don't control the agenda when it comes out. Evelyn?
The N C, the agenda is posted, uh published on the N C O website.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Thank you so much, Evelyn.
So I mean, I mean, to the chairperson, I I wanna echo off of her, 'cause she was giving wrong direction.
All right. I don't control that, but that's convenient.
Right, I I understand you don't, but then yet, the whole thing is because she wasn't here for the nomination and stuff, I would say, give her a voice and let her
That's not up to me. That's up to the N C O office.
Okay, 'cause I would, I mean, for me, as I am the vice president, but
Vice chair.
Vice chair or whatever, that the vice chair, I would be more than happy to give her my shot, my seat.
We we can entertain that if we get through all to the whole agenda.
Okay.
If anybody from um the uh, because if I'm gonna go through Rob's rules, the person who's um, anybody wants on the winning side voted for um to, to make a motion to redo the whole election, it's fine.
For the purpose of this meeting, what time do we have to be out here?
Okay.
Nine.
Okay.
Stage forty-four, please.
Yes, you get the Ernest, Ernest?
Um sorry, Ernest, you've been waiting?
Yeah, so first of all, um I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone at Neighborhood Board fifteen, Kalihipalama. I know most of you, for those that don't know me, my name is Ernest Cavari. I'm chair for downtown Chinatown. Next, I was wondering if there's a way that we can come together on our shared problems and issues to uh find solutions in homelessness, especially with our evil eh Chinatown River area. And if we can come up with a group of people to come together to find solutions that benefit both Kalihipalama, Chinatown downtown area, and even the Linaia area boards. So I'm just throwing that out there for you to get to think if there's anything that we can do to work together to make things better for our communities, 'cause we have a lot of things that are in similarities. Yeah, that's it.
Chair for coordination and outreach, I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you Kurt.
Positive and inclusive. Alright, alright. Uh any other concerns on the community? Any other concerns? Donald?
Resident and community concerned here?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh I have something to uh add to uh on the address ten thirty-five Motzi Lane, which is off of Ald Lane. If you go down that dead end street, you look up the hill, there are twenty-two cars parked, abandoned cars parked on the end of that driveway. The landlord authorized it and next door to him, there's several apartments that he owns and it and another building that he built a house on. Something is wrong with that property. Twenty-two abandoned cars, it does not make sense and it's ugly, to say the least. And I don't know if they got gas in the tanks or not, but it's just not good.
What's the address again?
Uh it's ten thirty-five Motzi Lane.
Motzi. Slide, that side.
M E T Z I D.
Yeah. It's over uh near School Street.
And so for me, as a community concerned, I do not appreciate to feel like attacked. Okay. If the agenda was changed, the agenda was changed. I don't work for the N C O office. So let's be open up with that. I don't, I don't like that. I never, I've never, I've never in this community, I've never in this community, we ever done that to anybody.
Well, I'm sorry if I didn't, I I wasn't offending you. Well, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to offend you. I just trying to be an echo of uh
I know, I got offended. I got offended. I don't control it.
Echo her onto my sheet.
I don't control it.
But I'm I'm adding it, that's why I said, chairperson, can I put her on the, what she is feeling.
So it is what it is. It is what it is. It is what it is. I shouldn't disturb my lady too. So it is what it is.
We're not voting for your position. She can ask.
I don't, it doesn't matter, but I don't like my name to always be put out like that, like as if I have for them. I don't, I'm a volunteer, like everybody else.
We all are. We all are, yes. We all are.
We're moving on, Ernest. Anybody else a community concern?
Yeah. It's a question. I didn't attack anybody.
That's how I felt. That's how I felt. That's okay. We're moving on.
You know, did I?
See, you have the official mayor, Rick?
You gotta put on your alligator skin.
Excuse me?
You gotta put on alligator skin. You get, you gonna get offended.
Can I call recess?
But you gotta skin.
Let's have a recess for five minutes. Because Donald like that too.
Recession.
Five minutes recess.
Sorry. I don't want to be on the old level.
Brotherhood Board, guys.
It's a little spicy in here.
What happened? We never did have something like this occur. What happened?
I don't know. Fifty thousand dollar improvements to the Ahiihi Street Footbridge in Kalihipali. Funding is an important first step for the planning and uh design. And um what will be the final construction, we just wanna thank um uh Senator Kim and Representative Hussey for their support and collaboration on that project. I know that that was something that the chair was concerned about. Um also, we're happy to see that the mayor signed um a robust illegal game rooms um package into law. So um council member had cosigned um these measures. Bill eleven um targets video amusement devices which can be used to conceal uh gambling. Bill twelve will allow the Department of Planning and Permanent and HPD to coordinate and code enforcement for gambling-related nuisances. And Bill thirteen lets landlords request that an HPD officer accompany them during um a property inspection. So we're glad that those bills made it to the council and to the um to the mayor's desk. Council member knows that too many families been facing, um you know, been feeling unsafe in their neighborhood, so. Um I will put the link to his newsletter in the chat along with any information. I don't believe that I had any follow-up from last month, but if anyone has anything for me, I'll be happy to take it back.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? I got a quick question, Evelyn Cullen. Um in regards to um inspection of the property, what if the property owner says, no, I deny you access? What does DPP
What does DPP have in terms of um being able to just access their property? Because I've had several inspectors saying, um, access denied by the landlord. Um, I've done my due diligence and they actually still can um inspect the property, but they're gonna have to go through some other channels, some other means.
What, what, what did you, you're saying that you did some research and there's somewhere in the law that says that they can access the property?
So. Um, still, the DPP inspectors can still, they still have the right to access the property if there's um reason to believe that illegal activities have been going on or um electrical, because a lot of it has to stem from illegal electrical work being done, same for a gambling room, so, um.
So, so for these gambling rooms, we put some measures in place so that they can access the properties, and then also, you know, there's a, then there, then you get HPD involved as well with warrants.
So that gives DPP access through the warrants?
Yeah, maybe you and I should talk offline so that I fully understand if you have a very specific case. And I, cuz I don't wanna speak out of turn, but um, and I could probably do more research, but um, yeah, so, so some of these measures are to embolden landlords and support them so that they um allow access. But I think that you may be speaking about some really specific things, so. Um, I'll put my email in the chat if you wanna email or call.
I have it, thank you, I will.
Okay, good, I'm happy to help, I just wanna make sure that I'm addressing the right issues.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any questions from the community? Very good, thank you so much, we're moving along to, thank you so much for staying late, uh Carl Rose.
Be back.
You want me to sit or just stand, okay?
Either way.
Okay, I'll stand this way, but I don't wanna, I'll move again. So, hello everyone, uh just wanted to announce that two hundred fifty thousand dollars in grant and aid funds were released to Decline Welsh Behavioral Health Foundation for commercial-grade kitchen improvements at their five twenty-four Ahii Street facility. A couple of items that affect our, your guys' neighborhood, or our neighborhood, I don't know if that's far from here, um, were included in the fiscal twenty-six budget, the state budget. Fifty-six, fifty-six million dollars for plans, design and construction towards Mayright Homes.
Wow.
I've been agitating for this since I knocked on wooden baskets in store twenty years ago, so I'm thrilled to see this finally moving forward. Um, three hundred, three, three million and fifty thousand dollars for plans and designs towards the um renovation, redevelopment of Kapuuna Homes, which I no longer represent, but I did for a while. Um, I did introduce a bill, uh SB, uh, sent bill four oh five this past session, which was recently signed into law and let that all, there, there was an OIP ruling that said that the chair, that you couldn't, um, that the, uh, elected officials could talk to you, but then you couldn't ask any questions back, which there's a certain appeal to that in my heart, but the whole point of the exercise is to have a dialogue, and so we got that taken care of, and so we can have a dialogue now. Now, if there's an action item, you still have to post it for the next agenda, but for, for just talking about stuff, we can do that now. Um, if you or anybody you know lives in a condo, as you're probably aware, condo insurance rates have gone way up.
Yes.
And we have reactivated the Hawaii hurricane refund, um, and, and certain condos will be eligible for some insurance. We can't, the state doesn't have it in its ability to solve all the insurance problems, but we're hoping that this bill will stabilize the market at least. I also introduced a, a reso, a Senate concurrent resolution one twenty-eight, which passed both houses of the legislature. Purpose of this SCR is pretty simple, it requires the Attorney General to catalog all the leases federal entities currently have with the state. My concern was that the federal government, well, when I introduced it, I was concerned they were going to make cuts to the budget, to the monies that come to Hawaii. They have since then done exactly that. Um, the estimates are right now that uh forty-seven thousand people will be taken off Med Quest, um, starting in twenty-six or twenty-seven, it doesn't have it right away. Anyway, what this does is just say, okay, what all are we, what all, what all the leases that we have with the feds? Um, many of them that we have now are very um low rate, like a dollar a year, or some of them I think are a dollar for a decade. So if, if they're gonna basically play hardball with us, we need to see whether there's stuff where we can claw back some of the money that they're taking away because we're giving them these great deals on, on letting our users land. And then, of course, in certain cases, they're not even repairing it, like uh Gallowa Lobby, which is still uninhabitable, there'd be people live there. Uh, just a couple quick notes on the rail, as a, as a rail supporter myself, I'm as annoyed or more annoyed than anybody because it's, it was supposed to, so I do know the dates, it was supposed to have gone into effect in twenty, or gone into full service in twenty twenty, and it was supposed to have gone all the way all the way to center, well, we're not gonna go that far now. Um, and now they're talking twenty twenty-three, I mean, twenty thirty-one, I'm sorry, twenty thirty-one. I just hope I can still walk from my place in Chinatown to the, to the station, cuz I really wanna use it, I do use it now when I go to West Side. Um, but unfortunately, these big, and this is the biggest public works project we've ever done, I don't know why, but these big public works projects do often go way over budget. H three took a lot, much longer than they expected it to, and it ended up being seventeen times the original estimate. If we, uh, you know, we better not get to seventeen times, cuz that would be like fifty-five billion dollars, but, um, yeah, I understand the frustration. Um, but the numbers won't come up until it actually gets somewhere, so right now, it's just, it's nowhere to nowhere, and I'm, I'm confident in it, and once it, once it gets to Chinatown, but they, they won't open it until Leucre Yank, cuz there's a lot of testing. They're doing the testing right now, they have the Federal Transit Administration requires like a year of testing. So that's why you see trains running to, pass the airport to Middle Street, even though there's nobody on. But so they won't, I, I had hoped that they would open them station by station so you could use it faster, but my understanding is they won't. From here, this last segment won't, the whole thing will open at once, it won't start, it won't make it to Chinatown first. Uh, but yeah, I, I think as soon as it gets to Chinatown, gets to downtown in particular, you get a whole bunch of uh white collar workers who commute from the West Side, who use it a lot. Anyway, I'm as frustrated as everybody else, I can't wait to, that's it.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much, any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Thank you so much for your time.
Okay.
Uh, next, Senator Kim?
Good evening, everyone. Um, my community report has been sent to the board members electronically, and if you haven't gotten one or you're from the community and want us to send you before the board meeting, please email us and we will get that to you. Also, I did send out up to, two weeks ago, my uh community bulletin that I send out twice a year, and uh it's sent out to those living in Senate District fourteen. Uh, it has the results of the survey from the newsletter back in January, so you can also get a copy of that if you don't have one from my office. Uh, I wanna go over some other things on my newsletter, has a highlight. First of all, let me just address the rail issue, like Senator Rhodes, um, I too supported rail when I was on the city council, and I said back then that if we didn't pass it then, it would be um cost prohibitive, it has been cost prohibitive, and I just think that we need to continually uh remind everybody how long the project is taking and when it's gonna be completed. So that's the reason I asked those questions, just to keep it current. Uh, in my newsletter, I talk about uh Senate Bill twelve fifty-two that was signed into law as Act two eighty-three, and that has to do with Alzheimer's training. Uh, as you know, many of our families, many of our seniors are being afflicted with Alzheimer's or dementia. And what this bill does is appropriate five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each fiscal year, uh, starting twenty twenty-six to the University of Hawaii, uh John Burns School of Medicine to uh initiate the related education training for our upcoming physicians, upcoming doctors, so they can be ready to uh help our Kapuna going forward. Also, our state budget, I wanted to highlight some of the things I know the community's concerned about education and about um housing and so forth. So the budget did include sixty million dollars for DOE deferred maintenance, uh forty-one point nine million dollars for summer learning programs, eleven point eight million for school athletics, uh thirty million for DOE electricity costs, uh thirty million healthcare education loan repayments, thirty-seven million for Kahali housing projects, uh six million for child protective services, fourteen point eight million for fire protection programs, fifteen million for wildfire mitigation highways. So just wanna highlight, these are the things that affect a lot of our residents.
Not afraid of jumping.
Also, um, I wanted to announce, uh, no chair, Evelyn has requested a meeting uh regarding addressing youth-related issues, and I have organized, and I've set a date of Monday, August eleventh, from six to eight P M at Farrington High School. Uh, inviting Farrington administrators and faculty, DOE representative, State Department, um DHS, HPHA, HPD, and some local nonprofits to the meeting, so they can answer your questions regarding, um, Amanda, what you brought up. And I do wanna commend Jesse Jones for his presentation, and just say that these are the kinds of things that the community needs to get behind the neighborhood board. Government can't solve all of these problems, and so just asking DOE or asking Farrington, um, you know, food drives, I know Palama Settlement did food drives, they stopped doing food drives cuz they found that there were people catching the bus from other neighborhoods with big bags taking a lot of food away from the community. So there's a lot of issues with some of these things going on, so they stopped doing their food drives. But I, I'm trying to get these people, I can't guarantee that they're all gonna show up, uh, but at a meeting, so you guys can address that. And I am also inviting the Kalih Valley Neighborhood Board and your Neighborhood Board to the meeting. It's not gonna be a really large meeting, uh, but I certainly wanna have um any of you who are interested in coming. Again, it's on um Monday, August eleventh, from six to eight P M at the Farrington Library, Farrington High School Library. Hey, also, uh, there's uh some free sports physicals that is being um held. All youth athletes are welcome on Thursday, July seventeenth, from two to six P M. All youth athletes are welcome to participate, bring two completed forms uh for DOE OIA sports physical form and a Kaiser Permanente consent form, uh both signed by parents and guardians. So, these are for kids who wanna play sports and they can't afford or don't have the ability to go out and get their physicals, which is required. Uh, so that should be a big help, and with that, I'm open to any questions.
Any questions for the board, Evelyn?
Hi Evelyn Cullen, I have a question, all the amounts that you've mentioned, shared, is that status quo amount, or are the departments mentioned be working with the deficit?
Those are the monies that are put into this, the new budget that we worked on, the biennial budget. So those are the monies um put in, and many of this uh sums were requested by departments and agencies for their programs that they're working on. So it's in addition to whatever services um that is ongoing.
Okay, um, I just wanted to say that Keleli Kalani Middle School also has um food drives um for the community. Primarily, it was focused on our um students there, but it's actually open to everyone cuz you can't discriminate who we're giving food to regardless if they're in our community or coming on a bus from different communities. So we actually have two different operations out of our school that offer um food drives, I just want to share that.
Thank you.
Any questions for the, for the board? Any questions for the community? Thank you so much, Senator, thank you for staying late.
Welcome, I'll see you in August.
See you in August, thank you so much, bye.
September. September.
Oh, September, September.
Oh, at our Farrington meeting.
Oh, yeah, August, August.
We're gonna see you August.
Okay, moving along, Senator Glenn Wakai? No, Representative for Shogi Temple? Uh, okay, Representative Sunny, um.
Well, no.
Daniel Holt? No, Daniel Holt. Okay, um, Governor Josh Green?
Aloha Chair, um, just really briefly, I know we're running quite late, I did put the link to the governor's newsletter for July in the chat. And I just wanna point out, because this concern was raised, I think you chair by yourself at a previous meeting. Um, one of the feature stories in the newsletter is about the new um state fire marshal. So there's some details about that appointment, and um I did note earlier in the discussion, there was an inquiry about DLE sheriffs um ticketing vehicles on Makoa, so I have that noted, and we'll follow up and we'll report back in September. And um, just that we are short on time, I just wanna see if there's any other questions um that any members may have that I can follow up on at a future meeting.
Um, any questions for the board?
I have.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Lloyd, go ahead.
I just have two things, the first one is the lines on the roads on limits, it's very crooked, it's not safe, and it's very dangerous, especially when it's raining. And then the second is the massing staging trucks on Libby Street going on to limits. Uh, it's gotten better, but today I sat behind a truck for like a minute cuz their left light was out. So when their hazard lights were on, it just looks like it was waiting, so, yeah, that's it.
Um, Chair, if I can respond to both of those inquiries, so for the striping on the newly paved portions of limits, that is just a temporary condition until um the permanent pavement markings can be installed. So, we ask that you be patient and very soon, right, we'll have a permanent pavement markings. And then for the vehicles, the, the container trucks that are um staging around the Young Brothers, uh we've recently also become aware of some congestion around Libby Street, which is new, and so we are following up with um the truck drivers on that.
Thank you.
And um, Pat, our question?
Uh, thank you, um, thank you for following up about the, the trip and the, the tickets that we've been having on Makoa Street. How can we find parking if that's what we have to park, is road parking? That's the only way we park, I, I mean, I had two tickets, he had one, my husband had, and all our neighbors all have tickets. Parking on our old street, so if they're ticketing us, where can we park? Because that's the hard time, we all got tickets and, you know, even police officers are, are ticketing our cars too. Even if it ain't at the edge of the curbs, all four corners, I mean, even Sherwood got a ticket, even Sherwood's father got a ticket. Everybody on that Makoa Street, he's always tagged, so how can we stop or, you know, find parking in that area then? Thank you, Chair.
Drake, you have any response to that?
Um, no, because that involves DLE, and it possibly could also involve HPD, I'll need to follow up primarily with DLE, and then maybe check in with the city on P D.
Evelyn?
Hi Drake, uh Evelyn Cullen, I just wanna say thank you to DOT for the massive cleanup on Awiki Street um in the recent week. Um, so, um, if you can relay that message, um, it looks really good. Um, also, the request would be if they could do that periodically, not just a one-time deal. Um, what else did I have to say? Okay, that's it for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Evelyn.
Okay, I think that's, that's all.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Just to add on to the parking and stuff, I think it would help if they could find better ways to, for the commercial vehicles and like auto shops that take up all the street parking.
Yeah.
So if they could like, find some kinda solution for that, it would help with residents in that area.
Yeah, and unfortunately, you know, and when we come home from work, we gotta, you know, those that is working there, they move, and then we move in, and then, you know, sometimes the businesses are closed, and we park there too. We'll get tagged for parking because the, the doors are all locked, there's no business that is open, but that, we gotta park, we don't have parking.
Just, I, I got one more real quick thing for you, Jay, I don't know if this is for you, if it's for the city. Um, but in regards to big tractor trailer trucks and, and um businesses in the area where they park their big trucks on the road. I know C and B does that a lot on McNeil Street, behind the old food land in Kalih, as well as um SMB trucking on Kalih Street. Do that as well, up and down all their big trucks. I, I had spoken to them that they needed to actually house all of their vehicles on their own private property, but if there's no enforcement, then I don't know who else to turn to, so, yeah.
Um, just based on that, uh, what you've described, I believe that is um a city and HPD matter, but I will also verify that with law enforcement and can report back in September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have Senator Glenn Wakai's representative, ready?
Yeah, hi everyone, um, Ashley here from Senator Wakai's office.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Ashley here from Senator Wakai's office. Happy summer. I hope everyone's staying cool. So Senator unfortunately couldn't make tonight's meeting, but I did want to report that I did send a digital copy to any Magua'i as well as Chair Evenez. If you guys would like an electronic copy, if you guys could email our office, I can definitely get that sent to you. But just to kind of go over the Neighborhood Board report that we sent out. Senator has, I'm sorry, SB 589, which is a bill that he, I'm so sorry. A bill that he went and created to help with electricity rates. You know that Hawaii, we pay one of the highest rates in the nation. So SB 589 will help mandate the PUC and establish procedures to allow power producers to sell their power to all HECO customers, hopefully within the next two years. We pay on average three times. We pay three times the national average for power. Right now, HECO buys renewable energy at 11 cents per kilowatt, and then we turn around, they turn around and set it for 43 cents. So we will help, this new law will help the public buy electricity at a much substantial discount. Also, one of the bigger issues was also fireworks. I don't know if you've heard this idea from Senator Wakai as well as the Director from DLE. Instead of paying to dispose of the confiscated fireworks, which would probably cost us a million dollars to send a container to get it disposed, one of their ideas is to have a stadium, I, I, having a show at the stadium in order to, I guess, put on a public display for the stadium, the new stadium build, kind of to celebrate the next step of the NACSE project as well as keep costs down so that way we don't have to spend a million dollars to dispose of the fireworks. Lastly, the Farrington High School will receive a new gym. They. Completion is expected in 2027. So that's something to look forward to for the GOVs. I'm here for any questions or concerns regarding.
Hi, just quick, can we not have fireworks at the stadium? And instead, maybe we can allocate funding. I think we brought this up already, having movie theaters during times when we would have fireworks, like New Year's or Fourth of July. Makes it more easier for disabled people because of the loudness and also the size of lights. We don't need more of that. And it's sometimes for people that are undiagnosed, it can be really hard to notice. It's, I mean, it's easy to notice, so obviously, many of us may not know that we may need cancelling headphones or we can't hide from the sight, so, yeah. Less fireworks. It's kind of contradictory that you're trying to stop having fireworks, but you're using fireworks for a big event.
Right.
Evelyn? Hi, Evelyn Cullen. Firework show in regards to that, I understand the cost incurred. Trying to cut out that $1 million cost to, to ship it away. But can you imagine if we have another disaster? Like the one we had on the first of New Year's, that would be way more than a million dollars. So I would not agree with that.
Okay.
All right. Any questions to the community? Marylin, thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and then we're gonna move on to, sorry, Selena. Thank you for your patience this week.
I'm okay. You're okay.
Okay.
Evening, Chair, members of the board. Selena Jankowski, US Army Garrison, Hawaii Public Spirits Office. Our next hiring fair is August 19th at Halema Military Reservation, and the training room starts at 8:30 and ends at 2:00. Most of our training is happening in Central Oahu. And if, in case you guys weren't aware, we, Schofield Barracks itself had a wild land fire kind of burned through our training area. 600 acres were burned, and we did about 660 gallons of water supporting that fire. We still don't know what caused that fire, so it's under investigation. And then just a brief, our annual training is happening again. It's going to start, it's going to be between October and November, and I think anybody can expect elevation in noise and more military vehicles on the road, and that's it. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board, any questions? Marylin, thank you so much for your patience this week.
Yes, yes, and I, just to real quick, we were called for that fire in Nanakuli.
You were?
Yes. And we did support. We supported with helicopter, with bucket drops, and boots on the ground. So for the exact number of people, when they were called, you might want to contact HFD with their Public Information Officer. They give you the exact timeline.
I was wondering.
Thank you so much.
We did support you there, and we supported at the Kuniya fire as well. There was two simultaneous fires happening.
Thank you so much for the response. Appreciate you.
Okay, so Community Resources and Educational Institutions, Salvation Army, Emergency Shelter, Financial Assistance, Mentor Rehabilitation, Health and Emergency Food Distribution, and Eastwood Services, 808-521-6551, or you can also Google Child and Family Services. Also, Red Cross, redcross.org gives a lot of resources for those that I can get. Announcements, the next Kalie Palamanir Report. What is it? Okay. Neighborhood Board 15 meeting is scheduled to be on Wednesday, September 17th at 7:00 p.m. This may change should the board decide to be since August, but we're just gonna ignore that part. Kalie Palamanir Report Number 15 reports can be seen on the channel 49 or on the website at the Full Week Times first Monday of each month at 9:00 p.m. And second of March, Thursday on each month, April 7th, 8th, and 9th.
Welcome, everybody.
Thank you. You're very lovely. Thank you, very lovely. Thank you for coming, everyone.